Fourth, two thousand twenty-two, planning and zoning. Meeting for the county. Welcome, everybody. Glad that you're here with us today and some on the webinar and some in person. It's great, great world. All the rain, some of you are really enjoying not having to fight traffic to get here today. So let's go ahead and do a roll call by staff. Mosley.
Chairman Limblum.
Here.
Vice Chair Slasher.
Here.
Vice Chair Slasher.
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you. Commissioner Arnett.
Here.
Commissioner Swart.
Here.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Here.
Yeah, we're having a little hold on, hold on just a second. I think we need to turn the volume up on them because we can hear them barely.
I got my volume down.
Yeah, we have.
I'll just turn it off. I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
Yeah, we're hearing today. We're gonna out it.
I just left webinar, so it's.
All right, let's try that.
Okay.
Test, test, test. Yeah.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Here.
Commissioner McGee.
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez.
Here.
Commissioner Montoya. Commissioner Dan Zeison.
Here.
Chairman, we have a quorum.
Wonderful. Great grateful to have all of you here today. We have a a lot of, a lot of commissioners together. It's awesome. We're gonna go ahead and read these announcements for the group of how we're gonna run today. This meeting's been noticed in accordance with open meeting laws, according to Arizona revised statutes, section thirty-eight dash four thirty-one. Agendas are available within twenty-four hours of each meeting in the Maricopa County Planning and Development Office and are also available on the Planning and Development website one week prior to hearing at maricopa.gov backslash planning. The staff reports are prepared for each agenda item. Shall become a part of the permanent record for each case. With respect to the hearing process, cases will be considered in the order they appear on the agenda unless otherwise agreed to by the commission. For each case, the applicant will be given a set amount of time to present. Anyone wishing to speak on a particular case shall fill out a speaker's card for in-person attendance or raise your hand within the go-to webinar. The amount of time allowed for speaking shall be at the discretion of the commission chair. Staff will provide the chairman with the names of persons who have registered and noted a desire to comment and those registered participants who have raised their hand. The chairman will call on each named participant one at a time and the chairman will conduct the hybrid in-person and virtual public hearing according to the bylaws and according to the rules established by the chairman regarding public comment. Votes will be done by roll call vote only and the chairman will verbally identify the specific members responsible for all motions and seconds. All right. It's a lot easier to read that when I'm not running late to this meeting for those that have been here when I do that. All right, minutes, we'll go ahead and put into into record the minutes for the July seventh, two thousand twenty-two meeting. If there's any comments from the commission on those, if not, those minutes will be approved. Hearing none will approve those and move on to our continuance agenda. We have two. Well, let staff announce this. You want to announce what's on the continuance?
Mister Chairman Commissioners, we have two cases. They are Z two thousand twenty-one, one sixty-two, known as the Brown Family Project in District One. It's a ten-acre zone change of C two, C U P D, east of the northeast corner, one hundred forty-four Street and Willis Road. And then also Z two thousand twenty-one, one sixty-three, known as S R twenty-four R V Boat Storage in District Two, a special use permit in the rural forty-three zoning district, R V and boat storage on eleven-acre site southeast of two hundred twenty-second Street and Williamsfield Road in the Mesa area. For both of these, the request is to continue those to the September twenty-second P and Z hearing.
Okay, there's no action required by the commission on that. We'll go ahead and continue those to the twenty-second of September. We'll move into our consent portion of the agenda. And if staff would like to present case number two, M C P two thousand twenty-one zero zero one, Arrow Concrete.
Yes, Mister Chairman Commissioners, we have two items on consent. M C P two thousand twenty-one zero zero one, Arrow Concrete in District Four. It's a military compatibility permit with a plan development for a contractor yard in the rural forty-three zoning district on two-plus acres northeast at the northeast corner of Ceraval and Ocatillo. There's no known opposition. The recommendation in paragraph eighteen is for approval of subject to conditions A through I. And then Z two thousand twenty-one, one thirty-nine, known as Lot fourteen in tract A, Buckeye Ranch in District Four. It's a special use permit, major amendment for a arsenic removal water treatment plant on a two-plus acre site at the southwest corner of Buckeye and three hundred fifty-fifth Avenue. There's no known opposition. The recommendation in paragraph twelve is for approval, subject to conditions A through N. I'm happy to try and answer questions that you may have.
Are there, okay, yeah, Commissioner Montoya.
I'm going to go back to case number Z two zero two one thirty-nine, the Lot fourteen in tract A, on Buckeye Ranch. I know that the special use permit, because it can be used to that facility. And the property is to go to the other. But there's no mention of where the art, what's it going to be, or where it's going to end.
Mister Chairman, we can't hear Commissioner Montoya.
Oh, thank you, Commissioner Slasher. Yeah, Commissioner Montoya, if you'll repeat that, that'd be great.
Commissioner Montoya, I do not know what the arsenic levels are. This is pretty common to add the arsenic removal components because the federal government strengthened the standard several years ago, so we see these all over. I know it is very small. I can't answer it and I don't know if the applicant is here that could, that could answer that, what it is. I do know that adding the arsenic removal is necessary to bring it to the level necessary for human consumption. If they do not add this, I'm assuming they do not meet the federal standard.
Yeah, and so I was concerned about it because it doesn't mention it in the report. And, you know, if you, if, if, if you're requesting a special use permit to lower the levels, but then you don't state to what, because now you're moving from the use that it has now and you're expanding it in terms of land use. I think that would be important.
This is required because of the geographic expansion of the special use permit area. We require the special use permit for treatment only when it's necessary for human, for potability, for human consumption. For instance, if they were just adding, if this is the place where they added chlorine for line maintenance, even though that's the type of treatment, we wouldn't, by, by policy for the past fifteen years, we wouldn't require a special use permit. It just happens to be. I, I should take that back. I think they would, for this geographic expansion, I think they would need this anyway. It just happens to be at an arsenic removal facility, but the applicant's here and he could, he may be able to speak to that.
Did that satisfy your question? Or would you like that?
If the applicant is here?
Yeah.
I don't want to take up a lot of time.
That would be okay, yeah. If you come on up and.
We need to pull it off the consent.
Yeah, it would, it would it be right just to pull that off or do we just answer this and get through it? Is there a, is there a procedural map? Does it, am I fine just allowing the applicant? Okay, well, let's do that. If you'll come up and just answer a question, we'll try to keep it on consent if you can answer it. Yeah. Yeah, you bet.
I'm David Hughes from E P S Group. So the, I guess the technical aspect of the amount of arsenic, I do not know, but this is an older facility that's been running and the increased demand of the water, I believe, is the reason also why, to expand the facility. But I do not know the exact levels of, in that area right now. So that is something that I can reach out to our client, Global Water, and see if they have a number and I can pass along to you if.
I, I think that satisfies it. I, I I understand that. I'm from the west side, so I know the growth in the west side and I know that, you know, I mean, Honopah used to be way out and now it's not far out. And there's a demand for, as, as we continue to grow, so I was just concerned about what the levels. If you can provide that information, that would be great. I don't think we need to pull it off consent agenda.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for coming up and answering that. Any other questions for staff at this time? Okay, hearing none. And if there's no one here wishing to speak that I know of, correct. We'll go, I'll go and entertain a motion on the consent agenda for items number two and items number three. That's presented by staff.
A motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Arnett. Do we have a second? And we have a second by Commissioner Montoya. Let's go ahead and do a roll call vote.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
Commissioner McGee.
Yes.
Commissioner Swart.
Yes.
Commissioner Arnett.
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez.
Yes.
Commissioner Montoya.
Yes.
Commissioner Dan Zeison.
Yes.
Vice Chair Slasher.
Yeah.
Chairman Limblum.
Yes.
Chairman, that's an approval by a vote of nine to zero.
All right, great. Thank you. Thank you for those applicants and the work that the staff and our community have done to get us to that point. We'll go ahead and jump into our regular agenda item, items number five and six, D M P two thousand twenty-one zero zero one and Z two thousand twenty-one zero five zero. Go ahead and invite staff to present the case.
Good morning, members of the Planning Commission. This is for agenda items number five and six. Number four, I mean, number five is D M P two thousand twenty-one zero zero one. And then item number six is Z twenty twenty-one zero fifty, offer the White Tank Foothills Phase Three. Next slide, please. The first request is a major amendment of the White Tank Foothills Development Master Plan to change the land use designations from small lot residential and rural to small lot residential and transitional lot. Next slide, please. Thus, the request will modify the existing land use designations approved in the White Tank Foothills D M P to land use designations more aligned with the current county comprehensive plan for residential land uses. These requests will enable the developer to complete the third and final phase of D M P, of the D M P for White Tank Foothills. Next slide, please. The second request is for a zone change with overlay from R one-six R U P D P A D, R one-seven R U P D P A D, R one-eight R U P D P A D, R one-eighteen R U P D P A D, and rural forty-three P A D two, R one-six R U P D, R one-seven R U P D, R one-eight R U P D, and R one-ten R U P D. Next slide, please. This will accommodate a proposed six hundred and forty-five lot residential subdivision in Phase Three with a density of two-point-six-three density units per acre. This will increase the overall White Tank Foothills D M P to one thousand six hundred and twenty-one lots at an app, at an overall density of two-point-five-three density units per acre. And currently, the D M P is entitled to a maximum yield of one thousand three hundred and eighty-one lots with a max, with an overall density of two-point-one-six density units per acre. This zone change specifically will increase the number of lots from the entitled three hundred and eighty-seven from the original development master plan to six hundred and forty-five for Phase Three. The proposed zoning districts for this site will create additional housing options in an area with a transition of densities during the developed phases of White Tank Foothills to the north and the adjacent residences in Waddell South, past Northern Avenue. On November fourth, two thousand twenty-one, this case was heard by the commission who recommended approval. The applicant has had the cases continued from four different board hearings. The board had instructed the applicant to work with the neighborhood opposition on modified project with lower density. On June eighth, two thousand twenty-two, the board voted to remand these cases back to the commission for consideration of the modified project. The applicant made considerable changes to the proposed development in response to community feedback. These modifications have been incorporated into the conditions of approval for these cases. Next slide, please. The zone change request proposes to rezone the site from five different zoning districts to four zoning districts with modifications to the approved base development standards. In exchange for the proposed development standards modification, developer will provide fifty-point-seven acres of open space, which is twenty-point-seven percent of the entire site. The open space will be a mix of active and passive recreational areas with access to adjacent off-site park to the north in Phase One of this development. By incorporating this open space in Phase Three, it will add an overall amount of open space for the entire White Tank Foothills community, about one hundred and three acres, which is sixteen percent of the entire community. Next slide, please. The applicant completed the requirement for notification to all of the property owners within three hundred feet of the subject site and area stakeholders. Moreover, the applicant held, held a neighborhood meeting with residents and stakeholders to discuss this planned event, this planned development. Prior to the November fourth, two thousand twenty-one commission hearing, staff received forty-three letters of opposition and an opposition petition with two hundred and six signatures. After the commission hearing, staff received an additional ninety-four opposition letters, fourteen appeals, and four support letters for this project proposal. The opposition is largely concerned with the lost community character due to increased density and associated access concerns with increased traffic. Due to all this opposition, the applicant held a second neighborhood meeting and worked with staff to modify the proposal prior to a scheduled June eighth, two thousand twenty-two Board of Supervisors hearing. Based on outreach to neighboring property owners, the applicant reduced the number of proposed lots from seven hundred and seventy lots to six hundred and forty-five lots and made several modifications to the layout of the site to address the numerous concerns. The support letters were also received from staff from neighbors who were in support of this modification and staff received six so far of support letters. Staff supports this request to change the land use designations outlined in the current development master plan for this phase of the White Tank Foothills. Modifying the land use designations of small lot residential and changing the rural designation to transitional lot designation will be in alignment with the densities found in the county's comprehensive plan. The original development master plan approval and previous D M P amendment that does, designed the Phase Three was developed over eighteen years ago and has sat undeveloped, undeveloped ever since. Since that time, completion of the nearby Loop three oh three freeway and intergovernmental agreements with the city surprise to provide public sewer to the community makes this increased density of Phase Three realistic. Moreover, home buyers' preferences over the last eighteen years have changed from larger lots with larger homes to a desire for smaller lots and smaller homes. Simultaneously, the R U P D zoning designations would be amended in accordance with the amended development master plan for Phase Three. By placing the R one-six R U P D and R one-seven R U P D as proposed, zoning districts closer to Phase One to the north and having the R one-eight and R one-ten R U P D closer to the existing rural residential areas of Waddell to the south will allow the natural transition of this development. The design and theme of Phase Threes will match the overall design of White Tank Foothills, completing the master plan community. During the public participation process, staff did receive large amounts of opposition concerning this request. The applicant has worked with the community opposition and made concessions to the original proposal that were presented to the commission last year. The modifications have addressed many of the residents' concerns. All of the modifications from the original proposal that the applicant now proposes will help ensure that Phase Three is fully integrated into the rest of White Tank Foothills community. Therefore, staff is recommending to the commission that D M P two thousand twenty-one zero zero one, the approved subject to conditions A through C listed in the staff report, and are recommending that the commission approve Z two thousand twenty-one zero fifty, subject to conditions B double A, listed in the staff report. This concludes my presentation. Thank you, members of the commission.
Thank you for that history and, and presentation on the case. Is there any questions for staff by the commission at this time? All right, hearing none. We'll give an opportunity for the applicant to come on up and provide your name for the record.
Good evening, Chair, Mission, Brennan Ray, eighteen, North Central, here on behalf of Northern Citrus L L P. His staff has indicated we were before you, not quite a year ago, with a different plan. A plan that had considerably more lots and then a number of things that, over the course of this past almost year, we've worked closely with a lot of the residents to make a lot of changes. Those changes haven't come easy for the developer, but nevertheless, there are changes that, as we've gone through the process, I know we needed to make. Because once the, one of the things that we, we were directed by Supervisor Hickman was to try to find a way, one, to work with the neighbors and, two, to make this development more compatible with the surrounding area. If I can go to the next slide. And I think with the exception of keeping the plan as it was approved almost twenty years ago, we've done a lot of things to create a better plan and a better development based on some of the changes. And because of all the changes that we've made, we felt it prudent to come back before this commission and talk to you all about those changes. Next slide. Contextually speaking, this gives you an idea where Phase Three sits in relation to the surrounding area and the area that we're talking about. Next slide. This is kind of a summary of why we're back, but at the end of the day, the primary reason is that we have lost one hundred and twenty-five lots, bringing the reduction down to six hundred and forty-five and a number of, another, a number of other changes that I'll run through. Next slide. This is kind of a summary of the neighborhood outreach. It's important to work with our neighbors and we've done that. You can see where the planning commission hearing date is and then subsequent to that. I can't, I, it would be impossible and not a good use of our time if I was to list every single email, phone call, text message, late night phone calls that I've had with neighbors as we've gone through the, through this process, including even having a neighborhood meeting as recent as last week to make sure everyone was aware and was apprised of the changes that we were making. Next slide. This was the plan that was presented to you back in two thousand, November of two thousand twenty-one. I won't take too much time on it. Next slide. But this is the current plan that's before you tonight, or today, excuse me. And at first glance, you can see that it, there are a significant number of changes that have taken place. Live. And I'm gonna just spend a little bit of time kind of walking through some of those changes. And I can go into a lot more detail. I've got a lot more exhibits. Mission would like to see how these changes played, but the short of it is, you can see kind of the comparison table of where we started. I talked about the reduction in lots, the reduction in density, as staff mentioned, overall. But specifically, the density Phase Three went from three-point-one-five down to two-point-six-eight. Because one of the things that we heard was that with the addition of these lots that we were making White Tank Foothills into a higher density develop. And you can see with the changes on that second line down that we're actually less dense than Phase One, which you can say, and that actually is a mistake on my part. Phase One density is two-point-seven-five, two-point-six. But you can see that one of the things that they've asked us to do is, is they wanted us to match up lot sizes as you look at it. And before, where I had some sixties and forties, now I've got sixty-fives next to sixty-fives. And where before I had sixties next to seventy-five foot wide lots, I've got seventy-five foot wide lots next to seventy-five foot wide lots. And so again, going with the theme of making this more compatible. Height reduction, we had a lot of comments, concerns about views. In particular, one of the parcels out there, despite having no zoning restriction, was all built out as one-story homes. And so we've gone ahead and imposed a number of conditions that are reflected in the stipulation in the staff report where we are limiting a certain number of homes along the Wash to a one-story in height restriction. There was a concern that came up about R V garages. If you were to drive out there and drive into White Tank Foothills, there's a very large garage that was constructed that raised a lot of concerns. And so in going through the process, not wanting to repeat that, we've gone ahead and imposed a condition that says, R V garages have to be architecturally integrated to the home. So it's kind of pairs one home and the height of that garage can't be any taller than the home itself. And there's examples of that with American and Phase Two of this development is, is doing exactly that. And you can see a number of other things. Next slide. This is kind of a side-by-side comparison, so you can see in contrast the changes and they're noticeable. We eliminated forty-five foot wide lots. You know, like I said, we matched up lot sizes. You can see the blue dots, very small on the plan, but they're little small blue dots there where there's one-story restrictions. And, you know, we think we've done a lot of to make it more compatible as we were directed to as we've gone through this process. Next slide. Continuing on with the compatibility, this is the current zoning map. You can see where I'm matching up zoning districts in our Phase Three to the existing zoning districts that occurred in, in White Tank Foothills. So again, there is a lot more detail that I could get into, Chair members of the commission, if you would like to show you slides, examples of exactly how we incorporated and made all these changes. But we are pleased with the change we've made. Know that there are some neighbors that still have some concerns, but we think we've worked really hard in, in good faith to address those concerns, especially when you consider the state of things. If you look at, at the area, one, as staff indicated, buyer, home buyer preferences have changes, changed over time, over the course of the past eighteen years. Desires, what people are looking for. And anytime I drive up and down the three oh three, it's me that there's another building that's being constructed, that's got another national company that's putting a sign up. So there's a great, West Valley has done a great job in the growth of bringing jobs to the report. Or you know that there still exists a housing crisis. And depending on who you talk to, either it's a hundred thirty thousand, three hundred thousand. At the end of the day, it's a whole lot that we're short on homes. And we're not gonna make that up in one fell swoop and we're not gonna make it up if this commission recommends approval of this case. But where this is located to the three oh three and importantly to Luke Air Force Base, I'm providing opportunities for, for the people that, that work and, and are at Luke, another opportunity to live. So with that, I would ask this group to recommend approval to the Board of Supervisors again. And I'm again happy to answer questions, happy to delve into details if necessary. And Chair, if I may, if there are, I know, I don't know if there are neighbors that are planning on speaking opposition, but if there are, like an opportunity for rebuttal.
Thank you. We'll, we'll give you that opportunity to rebut. Are there any questions for Mister Ray at this time by the commission? All right, Chairman Arnett.
Commissioner Arnett. I was fine with the more homes and the fact that there's fewer homes and now there's more open space. I like that. One of the things that I can remember about this case, just talk to me a little bit about how the changes in the different placement of these, different size lots and homes and all that affects traffic. Traffic was a big discussion, if any. I just, give me a sense as to how the, how the traffic has been, obviously there's fewer homes. I, I get that. But just the flow of where you put the more dense homes and then anyway, traffic, if you could address that.
Sure, through the chair, Commissioner Arnett, if we can go back to the one that's got the current plan, a few slides back. There you go. This is probably a good example, exhibit for me to talk about. So in terms of this, you can see on there, there's a, what I'll call a mustard yellow color lot. Those are sixty-foot wide, those are sixty-five foot wide lots. And then you can see we've got kind of a lighter. I wish I could point. I can point, but it doesn't work virtually, so it doesn't do us any good. But there are seventy-five foot wide lots are located adjacent to Citrus and Harmont, the new road coming out. And as we've looked at it and looked at our traffic, one of the big things, and this was something that I know we talked about at the, at the November hearing last year, was putting a lot of traffic up one hundred and eighty-first, which is a north-south street. You can kind of see it on the edge, more on the east side or the west side, east side of the site. That's one hundred and eighty-first. It runs up north. They were concerned about the amount of traffic going up there. And so what we did was we went ahead and punched a road out to Harmont, out to Citrus through Harmont. And the design of that intersection at one hundred and eighty-first and Harmont has changed. Previously, you would have seen a roundabout there and a more curved fashion. Working with the neighbors, they wanted us to try to provide a little more direct route out. out to, out to Citrus. The other thing that we did from an access standpoint, you can barely see it, but it's on the far west side, up in the kind of the dark brown lots that stick up, we created another access point out there so that residents on the west side could, instead of having go all the way around, go south and then go north, they can now go directly out, right at the very top, it's kind of the northeast side, northwest side of that site, there is another access point there that we've created. So that when we've looked at it, and I'll tell you, Chair, Commissioner Arnett, that we've worked closely with McDOT. As part of this process, we had to submit a traffic impact study, and McDOT approved a traffic impact study with 770 lots. And, and they were good with our access points, they were good with everything that we're doing. But nevertheless, we've come back and reduced that density to where I can tell you that the percentage of change difference is less than 1%, less than half a percent on a number of these streets. The biggest impact, and that's in a 24-hour period, the biggest impact is over at, again, over a 24-hour period, we're increasing the number of trips on 181st by 5%, which is a proverbial drop in the bucket as we look at it. So we've closely looked at it, closely studied it, worked with McDOT on our access points to ensure that we're not negatively impacting the existing Phase One and Phase Two area. Worked really hard to improve access and circulation throughout the development.
Thank you. Looks like circulation has improved, so thank you for your efforts here.
Thank you. Any other questions at this time for Mr. Ray? If not, we'll, and we will give you some time to come back and address any concerns that are brought up. We'll go ahead and proceed with our in-person speakers, and then we'll allow those registered online to speak. And then after public comment, we'll allow time for a rebuttal by the applicant. The, I only have one person in, one card in for an in-person. If, if there's others, you can come up and fill it out. I'm not quite sure your name, is it Dee? There's, I just have an email, Dern, Dern 1000 or something is the, is the name, but just go ahead and state your name and.
Dennis Earnhardt, I'm a resident.
Perfect.
Also a broker-owner of a real estate company, so I'm familiar with real estate and that area. That's my area of expertise. I'm a little concerned because at the beginning, I was involved in the conversations at the meetings, but we had somebody in the group decide to take over and communicated with both the supervisor's office and the attorney's office, saying that all communication is to go through him. And then he chose to who he wanted to communicate and who he didn't. Many of us were pushed out of the communication. So while there has been some great progress in it, a lot of us who were involved, those of us who are within the 300-foot notification, were basically put out of the loop by those people. I have still tried to monitor and keep an eye on it. I'm all for progress, I believe in it. I said from day one, I believe that 500 homes is the maximum. And I find it curious, because in the CCNRs, which were developed by the owner developer, it said that they have the right to develop, we have no say in the matter, but in the next section 2.4, it says that they cannot increase the number of homes that were approved more than 10%. And this is quite frankly, a lot more than the 10%. The other problem, those that are in the 300-foot area along Royal Palm Road, that's the Harmont, that actually is right behind Royal Palm Road. That's an access where a lot of that, that traffic will go right behind our street, which will cause some issues for the people living on that street with the noise and the traffic. We had concerns about the traffic. You know, going from 770 to 645 is certainly an improvement, but one of the things we are concerned about is nobody owns one car anymore. We're seeing people that live on our streets that have three and four cars. And that's a traffic issue for us because of the children who ride their bikes, play in the streets. We've seen a number of issues with the potential, you know, traffic accidents with our, our kids. Another problem I have is that, he mentioned Luke Air Base. It was told to me by the supervisor staff that, one, people in, are looking for smaller lots because they get the kids involved in community activities, like, you know, we take our grandson every week for swimming lessons. But that doesn't say we don't want a large lot, which we have a quarter acre, and a lot of the people do. People do not want smaller lots based on our surveys. A lot of people are forced to get smaller lots because of the price of land and the price of housing, especially now. The demand for housing has been up over the last two years, but as we've noticed in the last couple of months, that demand has dropped appreciably because of increased interest rates, delays in home building, getting supplies. I'm working with a client now, his home was supposed to have been done in late August, now they're telling me January or February. And so we're seeing a change in real estate, and I don't think what we were told really applies to today's, to today's market. And I was also told that the commander at Luke Air Base wants to improve the ability for their people to get affordable housing. Well, these homes are proposed at 445 to 600,000. I don't know of one airmen, and I've worked with a few, getting forward that kind of money. Most of them are in the 200, 250, and then put out of the market because the prices have appreciated so much. They said they wanted to expand the base. Well, I checked into that, there is no plans for expansion at the base that we know of. When I spoke to the office, they said, well, I said, they can't afford it. And they said, well, the commander is trying to get raises for all the people there. Well, that takes an act of Congress. And so, you know, I've brought up points, and quite frankly, I've gotten some points made that didn't make sense to me throughout this process. I still believe 500 homes would be adequate. If you look at the three developments now, at the corner of Citrus and Selden and Citrus and Olive, and behind the, the big park where Richmond American is building homes that have the RV garages. One of the points I brought up at a meeting, the last one, I was, not this one, but the previous meeting I was at, I said, why can't you put that road, the new road that you're planning for Harmont amongst the homes that you are building? And they said, well, you can't do that because you can't put a street where the homes will be facing that street. But if you look at the three developments, every one of them have streets leading to an access road where the homes are facing the street. And so, you know, our concern is access. I'm glad they wanted to put in a road, but we really believe that it should be put amongst the homes that they're building, not to the existing homeowners. We feel that we have been making sacrifices, but that road being proposed right behind our street, we were originally told it would be 175 feet behind Royal Palm, but in the last meeting, they told us it would be 75 feet. So there's not a lot of confidence in how far away it would be. The further away, the better. But we have nothing in concrete saying what it'll be. The other concern, I'm glad they're widening the lots, but my main concern is the depth of the lot. In the, the two developments along Citrus and Selden and along Citrus and Olive, they're building homes where the homes are at the front of the lot. I looked at one on the corner of Selden and 183rd, they had a truck that's working in there, a pickup truck working on that house. He had to park his truck at an angle so not to be over, hanging over the sidewalk, and the back of his truck was parked inside of the garage, about three feet. That's going to cause more problems with people parking on the streets. I know there's been some ease, they've been easing their restrictions on parking on the streets. In some cases, I understand in 2010, you can't have that, right? You can't restrict parking on the streets, but in our development, it is restricted. The problem we have is that in our HOA, the CCNRs say, you cannot park on the street unless you don't have room in the garage or in your driveway. And so we see places where they've got, you know, four, five, six vehicles, and I am not exaggerating, parked out in front, a lot of them are near corners, or what they're doing is they're parking those vehicles along the streets where there's no home, or it's the side of a house. And we have great concern of that. I have concern about how wide the new streets will be. I've not been able to ascertain that, which will cause problems for people driving down the streets, kids playing in the streets, as well as getting emergency vehicles in those streets. In that redevelopment, you'll see a couple of the streets, they have to make five turns to get to an access street to the main street. That's just, my experience over the years shows it's going to be really compressed and potential problems with that. So with that said, thank you for allowing me to share.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate you coming down and sharing your thoughts. Let's go ahead and move to those that are, any registered online to speak. How many do we have?
Yeah, three.
Three? Okay. Yeah, on, on those three, I'll ask them to limit their comments to four minutes if they can, is what we'll give them. So who is our first?
Stephen Bowles is the first speaker. I just unmuted him. He needs to unmute on his computer, and then he, he should be able to speak.
Mornings. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we can hear you all right. Go ahead and just state your name, address, and.
My, my name's Stephen Bowles. I live at 18189 West Las Palmeritas Road. I have one of those view, view lots that they talk about. Now, I bought this house with a long-term plan of investment based on the community plan that was presented in 2009 when I bought the house, with the full expectation that that agreement would be maintained and kept. And then I find out that it wasn't, or isn't going to be kept, because they were able to remove that section from our CCNRs, which I find, you know, disturbing because there are other neighborhoods that have agreements that are rock solid. You can't change them, that border this community. So that's where I think you, the, the board comes in to protect our long-term investment. Because I know this builder is not losing money. If he's so easily making concessions to reduce the number of houses, he's not losing money. But the 900 current owners in this neighborhood and the other neighborhoods surrounding it have a huge potential for loss if the housing prices in this neighborhood drop. And that's what I hope you are here to protect with your decision today, is our long-term investment in a rural community that we chose to live in. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question for you.
Yes.
CCNRs are, they're beyond our purview as a, as a commission. We, we look at zoning and, and overall, you know, planning of communities, and we definitely, as, as we go through, we, you know, we look at what's best land uses and how it impacts those around. As, as I look at, and so the, the CCNR issue, I, I just, I, I won't get into, but I will ask this question. When I look at the, the current plan before us right now, to me, it, it almost mirrors Phase One of, like, I, I would almost believe they were built at the same time, and that they're, to me, they look and feel, and it feels harmonious as a community. Do you feel that the current plan is, is drastically different than what Phase One is where you currently live?
Well, having bought my house at the crash of 2008, I know what it was like for, because I lost my first house in that crash. So this was my, you know, I had to look long and hard to find this place, and I bought it based on, it's a 30-year mortgage, and I was planning on staying here. Because this is the community, the neighborhood, Waddell, was everything I was looking for. So, yeah, I think it's changed drastically when you start changing the density of houses. And like I said, I, I operated on what I thought was a solid agreement, capping the houses with a plus or minus 10%. I was okay with that. Yet, if that's not what I get, it's a bitter pill, but their current offer is, you know, palatable in a sense, but I would prefer that they honor the original agreement.
All right. Thank you for your thoughts on that. Any other questions for this present applicant or person speaking? Thank, thank you for your time and your, and your comments. Let's move to our next registered speaker online.
Dean Schwab is the next speaker.
What was the name again? Could you say that one more time?
Dean Schwab, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Go ahead and state your name and address, and yeah, try to keep your comments to around four minutes is what we're shooting for.
Yeah, I'll, I'm just going to read a prepared statement for you. Yeah, Dean Schwab, I live at 18213 West El Camonito, and I'm budding the, the property and facing the mountains, I'm in that buffer area. And again, I have a very nice view property of the white tanks and, and don't want to see that affected, but basically, I'm just going to read a statement. And, and to Brendan Ray's comment, he has worked with us, I, I am going to make some statements that are going to be somewhat general and don't want to impugn their, their efforts, but there's a lot more that we can do. So, but anyway, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, thank you for letting me address the meeting and speak to you on the ongoing dissonance that continues between Northern Trust LLC, its representatives, the white tank foothills community. For over a year, the white tank foothills community has been and is attempting to compromise with Northern Trust LLC and its representatives on the appropriate number of lots and homes to be built in white tank foothills Phase Three. One key factor remains at an impasse, and that is the total number of lots, homes, and that can be built in the Phase Three. It was apparent to many of us early on that Northern Citrus LLC likely never intended to build 770 homes in Phase Three, but drew it, drew up the plan using a bit of a shock value of intended to build so-and-so homes, and fall, fell back to the 645 when they got resistance. This was to imply that they have given up something as a concession. Mr. Ray likes to state in his presentations that going from 770 lots to 645 lots is a loss of 125 homes, when in fact, based on their, on their plan, it represents a gain of 216 homes over the number allowed by the current white tank foothills master plan.
Dean, could, could you, am I the only one having a hard time hearing him, or, or others on the webinar as well? If, if you could hold maybe the mic closer to your mouth or something, I could hear you at first, but then as you started to read, it got harder to hear. So I, I want to hear what you guys.
I apologize. I'm just using the mic on my computer here, and it's may not, can you hear me better now?
Yeah, even if, maybe if you just speak a couple of it too, it might help, I don't know. We'll figure it out together.
Okay, all right. Thank you. A major component of the impasse is the unlawful attempt by Northern Trust LLC to increase the number of homes allowed based on the original approved county plat of 390 homes with a cap increase of 10% or 429 homes. There has been no sincere attempt, I believe, and on the part to arrive at an acceptable number of homes to be built. We've been told that they'll go to 645. We, you know, and I, I agree with Dennis, I've always thought 500 was a reasonable number, but we've never, we've never had anybody actually talk to us about that number. They've danced around the issue of offering what they perceive to be concessions, when in fact, they are attempting to give back with the current plan already as for a basis for Phase Three. Members of the White Tank Foothills Community learned of the surreptitious and awful attempt to change the CCNRs, determined the only way to protect the homeowners' rights was to, you know, to provide a legal challenge to Northern Citrus LLC's attempt to take away our homeowners' rights. The White Tank Foothills Community has never taken the position that they aren't willing to negotiate with Northern and Citrus LLC introducing more lots and homes. The point is, White Tank Foothills homeowners are not going to be railroaded into unilaterally accepting the number of homes to be built from a developer that still controls and retains and manipulates the HOA and CCNRs and uses it to their financial and personal advantage. The White Tank Foothills homeowners expect a sincere effort from Northern and Citrus LLC to arrive at an acceptable compromise on the number of homes that can be built. There is still wide opposition to this submitted plan. It is my observation that should you support AmeriCopa County Planning and Zoning Staff Recommendation to improve the amended plan, you highly encourage the developer to unlawfully pursue the endgame of fraudulently manipulating the CCR contract and White Tank Foothills Community. I sincerely request that you deny this application for an amended rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for this presenter by the commission? All right. Hearing none, we'll move on to our next speaker. And I think our last, is that true? We have one more registered speaker?
Yeah, Frank Scaglione is the last one. I have Frank unmuted. He needs to unmute on his computer and then he can speak.
Welcome Frank.
Frank's logged in on two accounts, and I don't know if that could be confusing him on getting unmuted. But I do have, I do have you, Frank, I have you unmuted. But it still shows muted on his side. That's what it shows on the webinar.
Give Frank a second to try to unmute himself.
His account is logged in twice, which may be causing an issue for where his audio is connected.
PIN number, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, so it shows on the webinar that he's logged in on a computer audio, and then it shows a second login with a phone that's not connected because it needs the PIN.
Okay.
So I'm not sure how else I can help him. I just clicked to send him, yeah, to send him the PIN code for his phone, but...
Mr. Chairman, if the gentleman online has trouble, he may call me on my cellphone here in the auditorium at 602-723-2241.
Let's say that one more time, just to give everybody your cell number.
By AmeriCopa County sale, the world is welcome to call.
We love your accessibility. He's done this many times. This is a true public servant right here. We'll give him a, we'll give him just a second here to try to call that number, and then I feel like we've done our part to hear him.
I think I have you on speaker now.
My laptop wasn't on mute, so I don't know what happened, but I appreciate offering your cellphone.
Great to have you, great to have you with us. If you just name, state your name and address for the record, and then let us know your thoughts on this project.
My name's Frank Scaglione. I live at 8338 North 180th Drive in the White Tank Foothills Community. I had a small comment ready to go, but then after hearing people, I had to adjust that. First of all, I do also agree with many of the comments that Dennis Earnhardt made. And at the June 8th Board of Supervisors meeting, when it was continued to September 28th, the plan that Brendan had presented us was 645 homes. Well, it's still 645 homes today. Now, they may have added, widened a few lots, did not increase the depth, but widened a few lots, 265 feet, which is actually more to accommodate the attached RV garages, because you need at least 60, 65 feet for an attached garage with setbacks. And as far, and we just found out about the attached garages, I believe it was either March or April of this year, because once they started working with Richmond American, who is adding attached garages. Contrary to what Brendan had said, there are more than a few homeowners in opposition. I'd remind the board, the commission, that we had 77.4% of the homeowners that live within 300 feet sign in opposition to the email, to the, I mean, signed in opposition petition. And also for the June 8th meeting, which was continued at the last moment, I received copies to 105 opposition emails to the board. I believe they only recognized 78, so I don't know if there was a timing issue, but I had Now, also, there's a, Brendan had said that there's a need for many, many new homes, but there are thousands of small lot homes surrounding this whole area. Many of us that bought into the White Tank Foothills did so with the understanding that Phase Three was going to be 390 homes plus possibly 10%. And it would be similar to the homes that we have in Parcels 9 and 10, directly to the north of Phase Three. I don't believe that any of the lots in Parcels 9 and 10 are already 115 feet deep. My lot is 150 foot deep, as is most of those of the lots. Now, also, hopefully, you all read the opposition email I sent into you and reviewed the attached legal challenge letter to the amendment the developer put through last August 13th. I'm requesting, one of the conditions to your approval should be to have this legal challenge for arbitration completed before you give final approval. Because we believe that the amendment that they put through to increase the number of homes allowed from the 390 plus 10% to the 770 initially, it was fraudulently gotten. And one of the things that Brendan is very good at, and many of the zoning attorneys are, is they use a ruse called channeling. That's where they put in a ugly first draft of homes for a plot, and then after some disagreement, they come back and say, okay, we reduced the number, which is really the number they really wanted to begin with. And that's what was done with Phase Three. And if you look at the deal development that's going up at the corner of Olive and Citrus, the exact same thing happened. They produced the first plan that was really ugly, like the 770, it was really ugly for us. And then they came down. So it's a way for people to think that they are really compromising, but really they're just getting to the number of lots that they want. And I don't know if I mentioned on June 8th Board of Supervisors meeting, the number of lots that were, he was going to present was 645. Today, what he has for you is 645 lots. So there wasn't a whole lot of compromise, given the three-month continuance. So, I would just request again, one of the conditions for approval should be to have this legal challenge for arbitration completed before final approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank, for your patience with the technology and glad we got to hear your comments. Any questions for Frank by the commission?
Yeah, if I'm not, I have a question for staff about what he said. Do you want me to do that later?
No, you can do that now. Thank you, Frank, for being on.
So, just to make sure I'm clear on this, if I understand it correctly, and maybe Mr. Pratt can answer this, it's significant that a couple of people have talked about this, you can only increase it by 10%. And I don't believe that has anything to do with us, that there might be a legal battle somewhere else, but we're looking at the zoning in front of us, and although that is something someone needs to look at, it's not us. Am I on the, am I correctly understanding this regard? I see a head nod, so we'll just let it go.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Arnett, that's correct.
Okay, and then, and as it relates to, anyway, I'll say some of my comments in commission discussion as it relates to some of the other things related to CCNRs and traffic and all that, that I don't think that's what we're to be looking at here today, but are good points that are brought up. So I appreciate the speakers bringing those up. I'm not entirely sure that this is the way to solve that in this body, but they're great points. I just want to make sure I'm on the same page. Thanks.
Thanks, Commissioner Arnett. Did you want to say something? Are you good? Good. Okay. Thank you for those that have come to speak. We'll give the applicant Brendan Ray 20 seconds to review. We'll give you a few minutes to review. Thank you.
I thought he was serious.
Chair, members of the commission, thank you. There's a lot that I can unpack based on some of these comments, but let me just try to touch on one. And again, I appreciate the comments that were made by staff and by Commissioner Arnett with respect to the CCNRs. But as Mr. Scaglione knows, and as the attorney for Mr. Scaglione knows, our office, neither Ed Bull nor myself had any involvement, we do not represent the HOA, do not represent the HOA board, we have nothing to do with any CCNR amendments, CCNR issues. We are strictly representing the developer in the context of this zoning case and the DMP amendment. So I wanted to reiterate that. Mr. Scaglione knows that, and certainly his attorney is well aware of that as well. Let me speak to another issue of this purported attempted channeling, putting a crap plan forward, because we know we can come up with a better plan. As Mr. Bull can attest, there's been, 770 was what we wanted, and we wanted that every step of the way. We wanted that when we came before you guys the last time, when we first initially went to the Board of Supervisors. We wanted 770 lots. There was no ulterior plan. And so, in the course of that, and I mentioned in my opening statements, that there was a lot of, a lot of discussions that we had with our client to essentially bang on them, if you will, that we needed to find a better way to become more compatible. I think, Chair, you said it best, a mirror of Phase One, when you look at the current plan that we were proposing. And that wasn't without a lot of effort on our part. If this commission would like, I can certainly detail the number of discussions and conversations that I had with Mr. Scaglione personally. I don't think you do, but I certainly can if you'd like me to. With respect to neighbors and neighborhood involvement, one of the things that Mr. Earnhardt said at the beginning was that he felt like he was pushed out. I want this group to know that that was not by us. We have welcomed any and all communication with any and all neighbors at any point. Along the way, we were kind of instructed, directed to communicate with a group of community representatives. And at that point, who the community representatives decided to include or not include in those discussions is in their purview. But I sat down with Dennis and had lots of discussions with him, and will continue to do so, as we have done and was indicated by the amount of outreach. The other thing that I want to point out, there was some discussion about Luke Air Force Base and what Luke Air Force Base wants or doesn't want what they hope to accomplish. We were never involved in any discussions with Luke Air Force Base directly. And with respect to kind of traffic, street size and width, the same streets that are in Phase Three that we're proposing are the same streets that are in Phase One, same streets that are in Phase Two, the same streets that comply with AmeriCopa County standards for collector-type roads for local streets. And so, we are, it's the same when it comes to streets and stuff like that. I think, again, as we look at it, just kind of, again, there's a lot more I could probably go through. If there's anything specific that this group would like me to address, I certainly can. But I think at the end of the day, what we've done, as I stated, was try to make it more compatible. Again, I reiterate, I think you said it best, Chair, a mirror image in terms of lot sizes, lot widths, was something that was specifically talked to us through numerous conversations of, hey, Brendan, we've got 75-foot wide lots, we want to see 75-foot wide lots on the other side. We've got minimum 65-foot wide lots, we want to see minimum 65-foot wide lots on the other side, which we've done. In addition upon that, we've added additional restrictions that didn't exist before in Phase One or Two. So with that, again, there's probably a lot more that I could, but that is what I had on my shortlist. But we would request this group's recommendation for approval. Happy to answer any additional questions.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions for Mr. Ray by the commission? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I'll go ahead and close our public comment portion of the, of this case, and we can certainly discuss this amongst our group and with staff. Is there any that, I think I see Luke with his hand up?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner, Vice Chair Slasher.
I'll be very brief. I pulled a minute just to refresh my memory of when the applicant was first, came before us last November 4th, and I sort of reduced it down, and I want to commend the applicant for all the, however many meetings he's had with all these folks. But I've reduced it down, reading from my notes, for the more important things of the concessions that this applicant's made, shedding an additional 125 lots, and doing completely away with 45-foot wide lots, which is usually a sticking point with most people, they don't want to see 45-foot wide lots, so there are no more of those. The density went from, if my notes are correct, 3.15 to 2.63. That's literally unheard of these days, that to have a developer or applicant go down to 2.63 dwelling units per acre. In reading the minutes from the last meeting, I think it was Commissioner Hernandez that spoke up about all the industrial growth along the Loop 303, he can probably speak more of that. But all of this industrial growth, two things, one, there's going to be a huge amount of new residents that need a place to live, one. Two, there's been so much growth, I think I've brought this up before, along the 303 industrial growth, that there's bleed off now, that's all the way in Buckeye along both sides of State Route 85, south of Iton as we head towards Hila Bend, to accommodate even more industrial growth. I think if Steph has mentioned, I'll wrap it up here. When it was before us before, I think it, both the DMP and the zoning case was approved five to one. And I think this is our district, Commissioner Hernandez and I both either made the motion or seconded both of those when they were approved. The last thing, and for those people that know me, and I wasn't going to say anything, the gentleman that spoke first that I think is in the auditorium, Dennis, I think is what I wrote down, just to, I think everybody on the commission knows this, but, and again, I wasn't going to bring it up, but everybody that knows me knows that I appreciate, especially going down there with that construction mess, for him to take the time to come down there and express his opinions and opposition on this case. But to set the record clear, his arguments of reducing these lots down further from 645 down to 500, and he said he was in real estate, that's my profession as well, completely contradicted the facts there. So... my profession as well, completely contradicted the facts there. Because it's actually the opposite. And I know this is, the commissioners know this, but to get more affordable housing, you actually increase density. You don't decrease density. The larger the lot, the more expensive the lots, the more expensive the homes are typically. So I just want to make that a point of clarification, that I disagree with that. But I do appreciate all of his comments. And I'm sure there's other questions from the commission. And once those questions and comments are made, I'm prepared once again to make a motion to approve this application. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Schlosser. Any others wish to speak at this time?
Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner McGee.
Commissioner McGee, you have the floor.
Thank you. I went back to the minutes and I went back to the November meeting because I was lone, no vote on this issue. I really, as a commissioner, in putting forward my vote on the revised project, which in my opinion is much better, can't really speak to motive, intent, or tactics of, of the developer, and I will not, and I will not take it into consideration. I also understand that I, we as a commission don't make decisions around street size or street width, that that is done elsewhere. And I wanted, and also that the CCNR points that were raised by those in opposition, again, are outside our purview. If someone could clarify for me where that happens, then we can, I'm comfortable going forward with this project as it has been proposed. So, Mr. Chairman, if you or staff could help with that, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah. And to clarify, you're talking about the CCNR issue with being changed?
Yes. It's, and, and also about the comment that was made about parking and, and street width.
Streets width, yeah.
Because we, I have some problems actually in my neighborhood with parking along the streets that occur with a high school down the way. And depending, you can't get through, and certainly a fire truck can't get through. So I just want to understand where that decision gets made. But I also want to understand that that's not our decision.
Yeah, thank you. We'll, we'll have Mr. Peck come up and talk about that. Get some lawyers involved here.
Oh, now it's going to run the meeting very long.
That doesn't make me feel much better to get the lawyers involved, but okay.
You also have twenty seconds, Mr. Peck.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
My name out in that, as you know, Commissioner McGee. On the question of the streets, let me just correct you. You do get input into that, but not now. Right now, the only thing before you is the question of whether the properties should be rezoned to basically the density with a lot of restrictions that the developer has proposed to you. You're not approving a project. You're not approving a number of lots. You're approving zoning. You're going to be asked to approve the number of lots and the width of the streets and everything else when they come back with their specific subdivisions. So not now, but later, you do get to look at those kinds of things.
Thank you.
CCNRs are private contracts between a developer and the people who buy the homes. They don't impact you at all. If something was done that violates the CCNRs, that's for the HOA or individual homeowners to bring a civil action against the developer or the association, whoever made improper changes. We have the same situation, if I can just have you recall, a few months ago, where we had someone who was coming in, who wanted to allow a minor child to live in an age restricted community. Our ordinance has specific parameters for doing that. One of the arguments was, well, despite your ordinance, we have CCNRs that don't allow it. That's got nothing to do with you. All you look at is zoning and planning and subdivisions and SUPs and those kinds of things. To answer your specific question, where will that be addressed? It'll be addressed next door at the courts if somebody brings litigation.
Thank you.
If that answers the question.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. And you kept it in under twenty seconds. That was awesome. Yes. Commissioner McGee, all right, Commissioner McGee, any others? And then we'll go to Commissioner Montoya after.
No, thank you. I'm good.
All right. Commissioner Montoya.
As someone who is a, you're a strong voice and vocal voice for the community, I always appreciate when.
Is your mic button pushed as well? All right, there we go.
As a community advocate and someone who appreciates neighborhood engagement in these processes, especially now at the beginning, I appreciate the fact that the neighborhood has raised some serious concerns, while at the same time, I appreciate the fact that the proposed project has made many changes to be able to support the concerns of the community. And I too agree with Commissioner Schlosser that, you know, one of the biggest difference is the fact that they've been able to amend their plan to decrease the number of lots per, some of the feedback from the neighbors. I appreciate the fact that there's lots of green space. That's very important for families. And, you know, that we're never going to arrive at perfection, because perfection doesn't exist, but it's always a balancing act. And so I think that the plan that is proposed is probably as good as it's going to get, taking into account what our attorney just shared, that while there are concerns about traffic and other things, those are going to be resolved later on as this plan gets developed. So I'm prepared to support the project.
Thank you, Commissioner Montoya. Any others?
Yes, Commissioner Hernandez.
Go ahead, Commissioner Hernandez.
I just want to say I fully support this project. I think the developers made great concessions and I'm in support.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Any other comments?
With that being said, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve both these cases as presented.
All right. I think we vote on them separately. So if you'd like to make a motion on item number five, we'd go in order. That would be best, DMP two thousand twenty one zero zero one.
Yep. I make a motion to approve DMP two zero two one zero zero one as presented by staff.
Commissioner Schlosser second that motion.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Hernandez and a second by Vice Chair Luke Schlosser. Go ahead and take a roll call vote.
Yeah, looks as though Commissioner Lawrence left the hearing about ten fifteen.
Okay. Thank you for noting that.
No, I'm, I'm here.
Oh, he's here.
Are you still online?
He's here.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thought you were, you dropped off.
Rosalie wanted to kill you off.
Okay. Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner McGee?
Yes.
Commissioner Swart?
Yes.
Commissioner Arnett?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Montoya?
Yes.
Commissioner Dan Zeisen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Schlosser?
Yeah.
Chairman Lumblum?
Yes.
Chairman, that's an approval by a vote of nine to zero.
All right. Thank you. And then moving into item number six for a motion Z two thousand twenty one zero five zero. I think it's conditions A through AA, if I remember right.
Commissioner, I mean, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Schlosser?
Go ahead.
Make a motion to approve case number Z two thousand twenty one zero five zero as presented.
Okay. Do I have a second? We have a motion by Commissioner Hernandez.
Second now.
Did I miss the second? Was that, did you do that, Commissioner Hernandez?
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah, thank you. We have a second by Commissioner Hernandez. We'll go ahead and do roll call vote for this motion as well.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner McGee?
Yes.
Commissioner Swart?
Yes.
Commissioner Arnett?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Montoya?
Yes.
Commissioner Dan Zeisen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Schlosser?
Yeah.
Chairman Lumblum?
Yes.
Chairman, that's an approval by a vote of nine to zero.
All right. Thank you for that. Yeah, these cases, this one coming back again, I definitely, I, I approved it the first time, second time around. It's definitely a better product, I think, for the community and neighbors. And I encourage all of you to continue to work together through the subdivision planning and, and address a lot of the issues that were brought up today and come back before us again. And we'll, we'll get to talk about it some more. Thank you. Thank you, especially to those that came down and, and joined us online. And if there's, I think there was something, we have a, is our zipper canceled? Did I remember seeing something like that? Okay. So our August eighteenth, August eighteenth zipper canceled? Okay. Is there any other announcements?
No, I would like to respond to Brendan. We have a pretty good relationship.
Yeah, so. Just, just, just real quick, our public comment part's closed and I'm, and we're happy, I'll even come talk to you afterwards as well, if you want to talk individually. And, but like record wise, we've closed that case and we're not really moving into it anymore. And our public part's closed. So, yeah, if you'll just have a seat for a second, I'd be happy to talk to your others as well. So appreciate it. Thank you. If there's anything else, no, we'll go ahead and call this meeting. We'll end this meeting at whatever time it is, ten fifty four. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.